Call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Here.
Taggerly.
DeBlee.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I think before we get started, I'd like to make an announcement, and that would be that, as most of you know, getting the property at the old airports released by the FAA has been a high priority of mine. And we received word on Friday that Phase Two of the property has been released. This is very good news because that means that the area can now be developed into the new industrial park, and we can move forward with the planning of the Western Interceptor. I wish to personally and publicly thank Director of Planning and Development, Mr. Bruce Peterson, and Charlene Stevens, the city administrator, and along with everyone that was involved for their commitment and hard work in getting this approved. You may remember that Phase One was released earlier this year, and we expect the release of the third phase and final phase by the end of 2013, if I'm correct on that.
That is our goal, by the end of 2013, to have the third phase released, hopefully in the early parts of 2013.
Again, thank you for your time and for your efforts and your hard work in getting this done. Appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to the opposed additions or deletions to the agenda. Do we have any?
Mr. Mayor.
I have one under miscellaneous.
Okay, councilman.
And that's dealing with the LALS agreement.
Under miscellaneous?
That would work.
And I have one that I'd like to, that involves new business that I would like to do, under miscellaneous as well. Any further, any other ones? I can't remember. Do we take a motion on that?
Consent agenda.
Yeah.
Consent items.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented, Mr.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Scheduled hearings, I would like to open the ordinance amending the charter of the City of Wilmer. Now, it's only fair to say that we cannot vote because we do not have a full council here this evening, but we'd like to hear what you have to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sean Mesky, the Chair of the Wilmer Charter Commission. I've stood before you several times, but tonight I stand before you with a high degree of confidence in the document that you have in front of you because countless eyes have gone into looking at this, and we've had, I think, consensus on most of the issues that are in this document. Just to summarize some of the highlights, most of you have been through this before, but the preamble is an addition that is there that is fairly customary in most of the charters that we looked at. Excuse me, the form of government stating that was an important piece, and we put that in there, the weak mayor council form of government. Then also, we had a change of city attorneys from the first draft, and the new city attorneys add really good language that they've added under vacancies, and we adopted their language, and that is in here. You go through the page six in the document where we had lots of discussion in the past on rules. Those are now in here as a selected list, as we had talked about in the past. In addition to that, I think those were the big ones. Things that, the defining powers of the mayor on page eight, which would be Section 14 of the ordinance, laid that out, and that, of course, is more reflective of actually what the mayor does for the City of Wilmer. Beyond that, the things that aren't in here would be things that we've talked about and agreed to, maintaining the veto authority that the council has over the Wilmer Utilities as well as the hospital. Because they are not in here, that means we stay with the current majority override that was already in the charter. The one thing that should be glaringly missing from this document is the one area where we do not yet have a consensus agreement, and that would be Section 208, the appointative offices of the council with the city administrator and city attorney. We took the advice of the city council and the recommendation to pull that out and bring this in pieces, and so this, I think, is the piece that would be where we have agreement pretty much throughout the document. And so, I'd open, any questions you would have, feel free to answer them, but that 208, we felt we would deal with that at a later date. We can talk more about that if you wish at a later time as well, but that's where we're sitting, is this is the entire charter minus Section 208.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with Section 208, no changes, or we stay with whatever Section 208 says right now until such time as you change or modify?
That's my understanding. We did have some, not just, remember, the issue was whether or not we wanted a job description laid in the charter. There were other changes that we had for that section, in addition to just that piece, but we felt that we should probably deal with that together and deal with that one issue separately. And so, there would be other pieces that I could have brought here today, but we wanted to see it as a package for that whole section. With no action, it does stay with the current language.
Okay, good, thanks.
Councilman Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your work and everybody else's hard work. The Section 208, are you aware that there's an April 2012 document from the League of Minnesota Cities called Governing and Managing Information, 369.3, and it deals with city administration and administrator? I'd like to suggest that this is the document that we may want to look at, either incorporating in its entirety or to modify it to fit Wilmer's case. I'm sure there's one on the League of Minnesota Cities website that also deals with city attorneys. This is a very excellent document, and we should get a copy of this, and everybody should review it, and we could certainly move on this, Mr. Mayor, pretty expeditiously.
I was unaware of that, and I think that it was an excellent suggestion, and I think if we could get that to the next Charter Commission meeting, we would love to take a look at that.
It's a very, very, the League really does do wonderful work, and we do ourselves a disservice when we don't follow what the League is recommending because we have paid dues to the League for numbers of years, and they've always treated us really well. It goes into the types of cities, what kinds of plans there are. It's just, it talks about a home-rule charter city, see Handbook Chapter Four, Minnesota Statute, Chapter 410. I mean, it's a very thorough document, and I don't understand why we wouldn't just at least start here.
Right, and for that point, I think we have to. The League did look at our draft of the charter. I think you guys had recommended that, and so, they did make suggestions, but that one area they did not cite, but since that is an area for us, that's probably going to be a pretty useful resource.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman DeBlee.
Yeah, Sean, just back reference the Section 208. Is that, is that really a section? Are you coming forward with that later, or is that a section that really needs to be part of the charter? Can that be something to be dealt with as far as ordinance?
It will come back here because that is one where the Charter Commission is adamant that we need to have those positions laid out in here and explained somehow. What that language looks like is something we can discuss and kind of come up and collaborate with some kind of an idea. We've batted around lots of ideas from not just having it listed like this, but perhaps saying, strike the language of the job description like we have it here, and maybe you produce the ordinance as like we have for the city administrator, create one for the city attorney, and modify or update the city administrator because that hadn't been done for a while, and then the language in the charter could say something to the effect that we would follow the ordinance as laid out. That way, you would have the authority to change the ordinance, but yet the positions are in the charter. And so, I think we can come to some kind of an accord on that, but that one, we knew, we wanted to see the rest of the document move forward and not wait because we don't have agreement on that particular piece.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. I'd also like to thank the Commission for all the work you've done and put into this
Kevin or Charlene, what is the procedure from here? For my clarification and for some of the others that may want to know what?
I'll defer to either the city clerk or the city attorney, but I think generally, I'll let the city attorney outline the procedure from here.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, since you don't have a full council tonight, you can't vote on it. Obviously, I think you should take additional public testimony if there is any more tonight on the amendments, close the public hearing, and then you would need to take a vote within the next 30 days.
Are there any questions from the public? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Sean.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the revisions as proposed and call for a vote on this issue on Monday, November 19th, the next regular scheduled council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, we can't vote tonight.
No, to postpone the vote until November 19th.
I don't think you need to take any action.
Oh, we don't have to take any action? Okay.
We need to see eight councilmembers attending.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll wait.
Do we have further discussion amongst the council?
You said we can, I guess, but I think that was done.
Okay. Is there any other further discussion amongst the council, Councilman Ammon?
I just want to say, I do want to thank the people that, thank all the people, even the people that are on the board now, the new people that will be coming on, and the people that we've lost through attrition and all their hard work, who have served on the commission. It's been almost two years, and it was a lot of work, a lot more work than people would probably ever have comprehended, but I appreciate your thoroughness and the willingness to discuss the issues with the council. We are very receptive, and we've got a good group of people working there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? With that, we'll move into the second public hearing, and I will open that up, and Bruce, would you like to counsel? Who is Bruce?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council. The second issue for public hearing tonight concerns the consideration of a special assessment for the costs incurred in abating the nuisance at 201 Havana Street Northeast. The purpose of the resolution that is part of your packet is to authorize that the charges against the property be a special assessment and be certified to the county auditor for collection upon failure by the owners to pay the cost, and the costs are approximately $10,557, and those costs would typically be recovered upon the sale of the property. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution that would adopt the special assessment for the abatement costs.
Any further comments from the public? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing and open for discussion amongst the council. Councilman Anderson. I move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the notice of hearing of the assessments for the apartment costs incurred in enforcing the hazardous building order to the property located at 201 Havana Street Northeast, Wilmer, Minnesota. Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries, and we'll move into the public forum. Mr. Bostrom, would you identify yourself and name an address?
I'm Conrad Bostrom at 13554 County Road Four Northeast, Spicer, Minnesota. I am the chairman of Homefront Connection, which is our local Yellow Ribbon Military Family Support Organization and representative of Yellow Ribbon Network for the state of Minnesota. It's my privilege to come tonight before you, Mr. Mayor and council, to officially invite you to a Yellow Ribbon Community Recognition Program for Beyond the Ribbon, Yellow Ribbon Proclamation, where the Governor of Minnesota and the Adjunct General of our National Guard will proclaim the newest Yellow Ribbon cities, counties, and networks. It is with great pleasure that we announce the following entities being proclaimed: Appleton, Lakewell County, Morrisaria, and Ranville County. Please join us in honoring their hard work and dedication in the spirit of supporting service members, military families, and veterans, and that these sacrifices that these families and individuals have made will not go unnoticed. The celebration is Friday, December 7th, at 3:00 p.m., with a reception to follow at our Evangelical Free Church here in Wilmer, and it is a public event open to all community members, and we would especially like to have our city council and our mayor be officially invited, and it is hosted by, again, Homefront Connection.
Thank you again. Are there any questions or comments?
Question. Could you please repeat that time again?
It is 3:00 p.m. on December 7th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. With that, we will move into the Finance Committee report for October 22nd. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was public comment, and there was no one at our meeting to comment to us. Second item was to certify unpaid senior citizen deferments. Staff explained that there are two parcels with similar issues in which previous family sales of property have failed to clear the senior citizen deferments of special assessments that were due and payable. Neither owner has made any attempt to pay the balance due. Previous conversations with the city attorney state that they are due and payable to the taxpayers immediately upon the sale of the property. Staff recommends that parcel numbers 95-921-5480, in the amount of $7,029, and 95-006-4030, in the amount of $14,137.10, be certified for collection in the 2013 tax year. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution certifying previously deferred special assessments for parcels numbers 95-921-5480, in the amount of $7,029, and 95-006-4030, in the amount of $14,137.10, for collections in the 2013 tax year.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Just for potential future concerns, we'd like to split those into resolutions.
So we need to have two resolutions for the?
Okay.
First one stated as is.
Okay. To introduce a resolution certifying previously deferred special assessments for parcel number 95-921-5480, in the amount of $7,029. Is there any discussion?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
That's exactly what I thought.
The motion has been made and seconded.
I'll second the motion.
And this is a resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries, and then we're on to the second resolution and the same thing. Parcel number 95-006-4030, in the amount of $14,137.10, for the collection year in the 2013 tax year. So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was some reports. We looked at the September Rice Trust, third quarter investment and dividends, the third quarter investment activity in the September 30th, investment and cash balances. That was for information only. Fourth item, we talked about future agenda items. We will be having a Finance Committee meeting for the whole city council on November 26th at 4:00 p.m. At that time, the Rice Hospital and the NUC will present their budgets to us, and then we will also hear about fund balances, and that's the meeting where we try to finalize the budget. We had several items that came up under miscellaneous. The first one has to do with the Rack Eight consolidation. We discussed the option of consolidating the Rack Eight Special Revenue Fund into the General Fund, as recommended by the auditors of West Bergen Ices. As discussed during the council work session held immediately prior to that meeting, absorbing Rack Eight into the General Fund would effectively streamline accounting practices. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee to consolidate the Rack Eight Fund with the General Fund to be effective 2013.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to consolidate the Rack Eight Fund with the General Fund to be effective in the year 2013. Any questions or any discussion? Councilman Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to know what the totals are in Rack Eight, how much goes to the General Fund, and how much goes to the reserves. And I'm assuming that's going to go to the capital projects, is that correct?
That is correct, councilmember. The General Fund revenues that would be added would be $240,000, and the expenditures would also increase by $229,845, as is currently proposed in the budget. There would be another $213,380, which is the projected Rack Eight fund balance at the end of 2012, and that would be transferred to the General Fund Capital Expenditures Fund balance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
The next item, we talked about some forfeited land valuation. Clerk Halliday explained that parcel number 95-450060 has become a state of Minnesota tax forfeiture. As such, Candy Oi County has valued this parcel at $408. It's required that the council approve the county's valuation of tax forfeited property. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee approving Candy Oi County's valuation of $408 for parcel number 95-450060.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve Candy Oi County's valuation of parcel number 95-450060, in the amount of $408. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
And the next item was 1972 Bond Debt Service Fund Deferred Special Assessments. Clerk Halliday presented a list of parcels with deferred special assessments remaining from the 1972 bond. The life of water and sewer improvements is 40 years. Subsequently, these special assessments are required to be written off in accordance with that policy. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution writing off the outstanding water and sewer special assessments deferred from parcels included in the 1972 bond totaling $93,254.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution writing off the outstanding water and sewer special assessments deferred from parcels included in the 1972 bond totaling Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
And then finally, we had one other item. Councilmember Christensen raised the issue of making one-time payment to community organizations requesting donations from the city versus annual installments. We took that matter for information, and we will be discussing that further at our November 26th meeting. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report for October 22nd, 2012. All those, oops, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Public Works Safety Commission Committee report for October 30th. Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was discussion in regards to parking in our downtown, and Chief Wifels reported to the committee, and in his report, he mentioned that the community service officers are the primary enforcement agents for the daily downtown and time limit parking violations. They spend approximately four hours a day on parking, and then we have clerical staff that maintains the parking ticket records and handling customer-related issues, and the report contains revenue generated from tickets along with expenditures in regards to employees and supplies, and maximum expenditures for endorsements when compared to revenue generated are a little more or close to being the same, and this was for information only. Second item was work to be done at our airport, and an amendment, and Jared Vogt from Bolton and Mink was at our committee meeting with information relating to a proposed amendment to work order number one for those improvements at the airport. If you recall, initially, the project included only crack seal improvements to the main runway, but in the process of preparing the contract, the MINDOT informed the city that the turf runway must be closed due to its condition. The project was initially designed to include improvements to both runways, but we received only one bid, and the council rejected that bid and authorized that the improvements be split and rebid as two projects. We've received, some time ago, the second set of bids, and none were received for the turf runway contract, and quotes were solicited for that work. The council then awarded the low quote for the turf runway in October, and the addendum to work order number one includes the costs associated with, including the turf runway improvements into the contract documents, re-advertising and estimated construction observation costs. These costs are eligible through MINDOT grant with 30% coming from local funds that are budgeted in the 2012 capital improvements. I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, for a resolution to approve I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, for a resolution to approve Amendment Number One to that Work Order Number One with Bolton and Mink in the amount of seven thousand one hundred dollars and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made to approve the Amendment Number One to Work Order Number One with Bolton and Mink in the amount of seventy-one hundred dollars and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries.
The next item was in regards to a response to a concerned citizen that came here to our council meeting in regards to traffic around Eleventh Street and Gorton Avenue Northwest. The city staff has monitored that intersection for speed and also for traffic counts, and found that the numbers are about the same as they were in 2010, and that Eleventh Street had similar results. The speed trailer was also placed in the area, and no excess speeds were indicated. Staff is going to follow up with that concerned citizen with some correspondence showing what was found. Couple miscellaneous items were brought up. The committee briefly discussed traffic accident that caused the power outage at Nineteenth Avenue and Fifth Street Southwest, and then also some long-awaited improvements to Tenth Street Northwest Railroad crossing are going on right now. Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad closed that intersection, and we anticipate, still anticipate, it'll be open by the end of this week. Is that right?
That is correct. That is the schedule they gave us, and they are working on that now.
So, we are very pleased that BNSF is doing that work, and that it will be done the end of this week. So, that's all I had in the minutes, Mr. Mayor. I would move to file the minutes. If there's questions, be free to ask them.
Second.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the Public Works Safety Committee Report for October thirtieth, 2012. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. With that, Councilman Dacken, would you tell us about the Community Development Committee Report for November first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on Thursday, November the first. Dr. Kiergard was present. He's the superintendent of the Course of Wilmer Public Schools. Could get graphic up on the screen. He was present to update the committee on the status of Lincoln and Garfield schools, and so we'll talk in terms of Lincoln first and then Garfield. A closing date of November sixteenth has been set for the sale of Lincoln School. It is being sold to a group who intends to use it as a church. Staff noted that the change in use will require zoning approvals. Dr. Kiergard said a tract of land remains east of the sale parcel could be available to the city to link Ninth Street Southeast and expand the parkland to the east. And I'd ask Mr. Peterson if you would speak to this, what we talked about in the committee meeting.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, the property that's being sold for church purposes is the property that includes the school building, and as you can see in the drawing, extends up to a red line. That is actually the westerly right-of-way of Ninth Street that was vacated a number of years ago. You'll notice seventy feet east of that, there's another red line, and that represents the east right-of-way of vacated Ninth Street. What the school district's intentions would be to talk to the city and determine interest in acquiring the right-of-way of Ninth Street as well as the property lying east of that, which would take you from the east right-of-way to the next red line, which is just on the east side of the tennis courts. That has remained school property. Everything east of that, including the softball field and the hockey rink, is actually city property at this time. So, Dr. Kiergard specified that the school district was interested in having that discussion with the city, so we'll see what comes about from that.
Thank you. Question. We don't already have that right-of-way for Ninth Street, the city?
That was vacated. Half of it, well, right now, it all belongs to the school because they are the property owner on each side, and they are selling everything west of the west right-of-way of the vacated street.
I understood that, but I thought we still had the right-of-way.
We do not.
Well, that'd be a vast improvement for that area. That'd really be nice. I live two blocks south of that. It'd really be nice.
Getting that Ninth Street connection or that link would be very favorable.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And then also, there will be a use, change of the building, and what are the requirements placed upon the church? Mr. Peterson.
Currently, the property is zoned GI or government-institutional. In order for a church to operate on that location, it would have to be rezoned to a classification that allows churches, and that would typically be one of the low-density residential districts. And this property is pretty much surrounded by R-two property, and it would be the recommendation of staff, and I'm sure the planning commission moving forward, that that property be rezoned to R-two, at which point the congregation will have to apply for a conditional use permit to have the use considered as a specific use on that site.
Thank you. Dr. Kiergard concluded by saying that the school district plans to maintain Garfield School as the home of the Alternative Learning Center, and there are no changes anticipated for that building in the near future. And we did have some discussion in the committee with him, and it's amazing. I think I asked him the question, how much of the school is used, the Garfield School, and he said the entire school is being used for that program and for the foreseeable future. Other comments? We'll go to number three then, downtown planning update for information only. Staff presented an update on a recent meeting to discuss the progress on downtown. Downtown plan goals. The following issues were discussed at the meeting, parking study, Robins Island to Downtown Trail, gateways, central business district, zoning boundaries, expansion, and central business district design standards. The committee raised questions about the downtown development and funding of projects. Item number four was miscellaneous. The committee discussed the following status of goodwill, Mills Auto Projects, status of the airport land release, which the mayor covered, and future use of local option sales tax funds for infrastructure. And unless there are questions, I would move to file these minutes. Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question, I'm sorry I wasn't able to make the meeting, Mr. Dacken. The question I have was on Lincoln School, the area that is to the west of the line or the street, or the proposed street that's going to be coming in on Ninth. Was it Ninth? Yeah. So, the areas in the red there, that I understand, is going to be still owned by the school district or not?
It's my understanding.
Okay. So, as far as reacquisitioning that at a time, we should need a street in there. It should be just a simple matter of going to the school district and having that move back into our possession for street improvements if we should decide to do that, correct?
Well, I mean, the school district owns that property. I mean, they would have to choose to relinquish it, and whether they would do that freely or without compensation. I mean, I don't know that we have any answer to that.
Yeah. Well, it should be pretty simple, because we'll give them to them, but that's beside the point. And as far as the future, did he talk about the future development of what they're going to do with that park since now it's changed with the use of the school? Is that where we're going to be working jointly with them on improving that park since now the area's changed into a better use for the neighborhood?
I think that's a very developing project, isn't it?
I would anticipate that's something that will be discussed further once the sale of the school building and the subject parcel is accomplished. The school district really doesn't have any desire to hang on to that parkland, and I'm sure they'll be offering some suggestions to the city.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Another question, Mr. Dacken, was on the Garfield School site. I had a meeting with three or four individuals from the neighborhood. It was after National Night Out, and they were concerned about the use of the park facility. Of course, one of their biggest concerns was to have the city use that for stormwater retention area, and I said, "That's not in our plan at this time to do anything with it." But as far as future use of that park, it's kind of a diamond in the rough. It's a huge, massive open area, and they had some concerns on what we were going to be doing or what the school district was going to be doing with that site in the future, and what role that's going to play in developing the neighborhood also. And I'm just wondering if that's something that the Park and Rec Department should be looking at, or maybe we could be in contact or meeting with some of the neighbors. They had ideas on planting and growings and growing different things in the park, just to beautify the park a little bit right now in that area, and that was a neighborhood interest that stemmed out of the National Night Out meeting that I had with them. But I told them that I would respond to them, and I think the only thing I can do now is maybe just if the staff could take that issue and give it to the Park and Rec Board.
If you could provide a contact name and information to me from the neighborhood, we can follow up with it, and then I will talk with Steve Brizendine, the Director of Community Ed and Recreation.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Shirley. Thank you, Mr. Dacken.
Yeah, and it would be my recommendation to you too, Steve, that you maybe invite them to come to the next Community Development Committee meeting. We can talk about it there and decide where it needs to be discussed, either at Community Ed and Rec or there.
I invited them, but they weren't too excited to come, but I'll get you the information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Unless there are further questions, I'd move to file the minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee Report for November first, 2012. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. And we have item number thirteen, consideration of the currency exchange application. Whoops, I'm sorry, we go to number twelve. Consideration of deferred special assessments for senior citizens or disabled persons. Kevin, would you like to speak to us about that?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, every year when we do a street improvement project pursuant to our comprehensive assessment policy, there's opportunities for senior citizens or those permanently disabled to defer their adopted assessments until such time as the property changes ownership. We lose homestead credit, or they no longer are eligible for some other reasons. But the bottom line is, you have a resolution before you that lists a variety of people and properties and the assessments so listed who have made application and have met your income guidelines that we adopted in the last six months. These deferments would be put on from 2013 to 2022, with the rest of them, they'll be deferred. They will be at the interest rate of three point nine percent, and that only goes for ten years, matches the bond sale, and then that dollar amount is frozen from that point on. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution of the listed properties in dollar amounts you have before you.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution. Is that the five qualifying applications?
Yes, there.
I have five there.
Okay. Five qualifying applications. Is there any discussion? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know our present policy doesn't specify anything about us collecting that interest, but might that be something that we should do? I mean, we just wrote off ninety-three thousand dollars earlier tonight because the deferments, they'd exceeded the life of the infrastructure. Should we think about collecting that interest for the ten years?
Collecting just the interest and the principal?
Just the interest, and we can leave everything else deferred, the principal, but at least collecting some of the interest. It wouldn't be a big dollar amount, but it would be something. Maybe it's something we can just take back for consideration.
We can certainly analyze that. Two separate issues, though. The parcels you deferred earlier start with a thirty-three, which means they're not a City of Wilmer parcel yet, and you have no power, no authority, to make those assessments. They're all in Wilmer Township. So, they never came into the city for the forty years of the useful life, so we wrote them off. These are in the city, you have control on the property, and so they're similar to the two that you dealt with earlier that never paid that when they had an inter-family transfer of the property, because they don't have a title company and a closing agent, and so they're just handing it off to children, and that's where we have to monitor that. Now, the other comment I can make, too, if you have some concerns, you have two of them there that are one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That's a hundred and twenty-three dollars a year. So, if we're analyzing this in your finance committee, we may analyze a threshold also that...
It's fine. You know, you have one that's five thousand dollars.
No doubt.
Anyway, we don't need to get into the pros and cons of it. I would just like you to take a look at that and see, in any case, if we should be at least collecting interest on some of these things.
We can analyze that.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Question. Do we all, is that something that by state statutes is legal to do?
To grab the interest only?
Yeah.
Well, we'll analyze that. I guess that's where we'll start.
I think the city attorney can provide a response to that.
Yeah, we will start there. Now, this is also allowed by councils because the statute allows it. You can choose not to do this. You have that authority, too. But, very good question, can we split the principal from the interest and just defer one? I don't know that yet.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, Councilman Amen. Certainly, in the statute, you have the legal authority to set the interest rate and the amount of interest, and you even could take the position of not applying any interest to deferment. I'm not sure if the other corresponding question is the case. I don't know that there's necessarily statutory authority for what you're suggesting.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave that subject, I just do have a quick question for the city attorney, if I may.
Go ahead.
Since your firm is attorneys for other cities, are there any cities that don't follow the state statute and don't allow deferments at all for senior citizens?
I'm not aware of any that would do that. I mean, obviously, you have a specific set of circumstances where you've got someone that has a financial hardship and is a senior. I'm certainly not aware of any city that wouldn't allow a deferment.
So, under the state statutes, then, all eight-hundred-and-some-odd cities of the state are able to do that, to give the deferment?
That's correct.
Okay.
Let's...
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Do we have a, we have a motion and a second. Did we do the roll call?
We did second.
Okay, then we go on to the next one. Kevin, would you like to explain to us number thirteen, consideration of the currency exchange applications?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, we have two businesses in the city that offer currency exchange applications. They're annual permits. They've made their application to the State of Minnesota, and the Department of Commerce sends it back to the city within that 60-day time period to hold a public hearing and take any public testimony or comments of how that's going. We received the two for quick funds with Mr. Daryl Sunbold and checks cashed and payday loans with Bennett Ventures, Inc. Stat's recommendation to set two hearings on November 19th and solicit any public comments.
So moved.
Second.
So do we have a motion to approve?
Yes.
To hold, to set hearings. It's two weeks away. That's all we're doing now.
To set the hearing?
Just to set the hearings.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, say no. That motion carries. And then Bruce, if you'd like to tell us about number 14, consideration of an ordinance to rezone from general business to light business to whatever that CBD is.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, the concept of expanding the physical boundaries of the central business district began quite a while, or was considered quite a while before the city embarked on its recent downtown plan. The plan as adopted actually contains an element that recommends or sets as a goal the expansion of the central business district. Staff and the planning commission have given this matter a lot of thought the last few months, and results in the proposal that's in front of the council tonight. The city has listed in the plan as the champion to make that happen, and obviously, the council is the only group with the legal authority in the community to expand the central business The central business district currently encompasses approximately 14 blocks, 14 square blocks, as shown in the blue outline. Everything within the purple or magenta outlined area is proposed to be added to the central business district, which is approximately eight blocks. The primary reason to consider the expansion of the central business district is to try to create more intensity at the urban core. We want to try to have a higher intensity development standard, allow greater density at our central business core, to increase population density, to increase business density, and to make the area function as a larger, tighter urban center. That being said, it's the recommendation of staff that the ordinance be introduced for a public hearing on November 19th, 2012, not on July 2nd, as shown on your forms. That was a little mistake there, and we missed it by a couple of years, too. But we'd be happy to take any questions that the council may have.
Are there any questions? Councilman Christianson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Bruce. By expanding the boundaries as you've done on the map up there, what does that do to those blocks that are going to be added? Does it designate them as a different tax purpose, or, I mean, what exactly, what effect does it have on those blocks?
It has no impact on any property owner until their property is redeveloped. They will continue to be taxed based on the use. If they've got a single-family home, they will be taxed as a single-family home. If some of the property redevelops as commercial uses, they will be taxed as commercial uses. It does not compel anyone to do anything, but it provides the means for greater density of development. If a multifamily housing developer wanted to come in and buy up a block, they could do so and develop higher-density housing that would both support and be supported by the central business district.
Do you ever foresee that expanding to the east, east of the highway?
We discuss that a lot, Councilman Christensen. I think First Street serves as a very, very formidable physical boundary to the central business district. And to expand the central business district across First Street, I think you're inviting pedestrian movements and conceptual vehicle movements that really aren't consistent with the best interests of the community as far as growing forward.
Okay, and once again, thank you.
Bruce, I have a question. Do you see any effect whatsoever in any way, shape, or form with the other plans for the downtown because of this?
No, in fact, the downtown plan as adopted, and this element in particular, is very consistent with the city's overall comprehensive plan that has called for consideration of expanding the central business district for quite some time.
Thank you. Councilman DeBleek?
Yeah, I'm sure, there's a lot of changes that go with this as far as zoning setbacks and that, when it's moved into or redeveloped within that central business district. How did you determine these particular lines?
Okay, a lot of it was based on the original meeting we had a year ago before we started the downtown plan. We held the community meeting at Bethel Church, and people were given a map of the downtown area and asked to draw on that map what their perception was of the central business district. And interestingly, most people's concept of the central business district includes this larger area. And so we were taking, we weren't just pulling lines out of the air, we were saying, "Okay, this is already a common perception." And we had that map at that time with various shades of orange overlay based on the number of responses or the number of people that included a particular block in their perception of the central business district. And the darker the shade of orange, the more people were of the opinion that that was or should be central business district. And that really served as the basis for the planning commission's discussion.
Okay. And how many single-family homes there would be in the central business district under this plan?
I'm going to have to guess right offhand, probably a dozen.
One question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Amon?
Bruce, could you explain, from this angle, it's hard for me to see. Does that go from Seventh, on the west side, from Seventh Street Southwest over to include Eighth Street Southwest, correct? On the far left, your far-left side where the red line is?
No, it goes from Sixth Street to Seventh Street.
Sixth Street to Seventh Street, okay.
Currently, the block with the Presbyterian Church is not in the central business district, but the block to the north is.
But it follows Seventh Street all the way to, what is that?
Pacific.
Pacific from, I can't make it out, from Trot, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Dokken, do you have a question?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, I think I asked you in committee, you say in here that the expansion can bring benefits to certain types of businesses, and I think one of those was a bar. Was that one of the recommendations or one of the potential uses? And I'm thinking, after that committee meeting of the issues we have that we involve our PD with respect to the Legion Post, the VFW in residential areas, the old roller skating rink, besides a bar, what are some other types of businesses, do you think, that would fit that?
Well, I think in a central business district, when a people think of a downtown, they're thinking of a mix of commercial businesses, professional office businesses, professional services, healthcare, government. You know, it really runs the gamut in the central business district, and that's where you really receive the benefits of that type of development because you've got a great mixture of uses, you've got a lot of different activities, and all the activities kind of feed off each other. It becomes a symbiotic relationship, and that's what really strengthens the core of that central business district. So that's where our downtown has weakened over the years. We've lost that intensity. We've lost that real urban feel, the excitement, the intensity that those types of uses generate.
Okay, thank you.
One other comment, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, on the south side, south of Trot Avenue, down to, is it Minnesota?
Minnesota.
Minnesota. That area's been slowly progressing into more of a commercial parking lot area for development of the hospital and the medical facilities there anyway, so I think that's a good move. I think it's a good move to finally expand that. It should bring in more development for, you know, maybe larger complexes of rental properties to enhance the downtown development. I would hope that might be a location, and they keep talking about a parking lot rather than Block 50, there's other options now.
The planning commission would like to see some additional commercial development, first-floor commercial development with second and third-floor residential development. That would be very consistent with the goals of our comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
So what are we looking for this evening, Bruce?
A simple motion to introduce the ordinance for a public hearing on November 19th.
Motion has been made and seconded. Thank you, Bruce. And seconded that ordinance be introduced for a public hearing on November 19th at council meeting. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, say no. That motion carries. We go now to the announcement of the committee meeting dates. Councilman Reese?
Public Works, Public Safety, Tuesday, November 13th at 4:45.
Councilman Amon?
Labor Relations, this Thursday, November 8th at 4:45. Conference Room 1.
Conference Room 1. Councilman Dokken?
I would assume the 14th, 4:45, Conference Room Number 1.
15th.
15th. 15th, excuse me. Thank you, Dennis.
Councilman Anderson?
The Finance Committee, Monday is the celebration of Veterans Day, so we're going to have the Finance Committee on Wednesday, the 14th, at 4:45.
That reminds me, are city offices closed on November?
City offices will be closed for Veterans Day holiday.
Okay. Under miscellaneous, Councilman Amon, did you have?
Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just repeat further calendars. The Board of Canvas will be 3:00 PM Friday, must be the 9th.
Thursday, huh?
9th. Friday, the 9th.
Okay. What time was that? I'm sorry.
3:00 PM, Friday, the 9th, is the Board of Canvas.
Okay, and then we have a resolution. Would you like to explain that to us?
Councilmember Amon is prepared to.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce a resolution, and this action is, the request is approved, the stipulation agreement and partial implementation of the LALS, or the Police Officers Arbitration Award for 2011 and 2012. The fiscal impact is the back pay adjustments total approximately $59,795.93, and will be paid for from the non-departmental funds for 2011, and will be paid from wages and salaries for 2012 and/or non-departmental for 2012. The back pay would be due regardless of the date of implementation, and there is no savings to the city to delay the payments to the employees. So I would do approve and introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the stipulation agreement and partial implementation of the LALS arbitration award for 2011 and 2012. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, this was binding arbitration, so we went into this, we knew that the outcome was a non-negotiable issue. Once the arbitration award was given, either side has to conform to both parties, or both sides of what the arbitrator was awarded, and that was Mr. Latimer, former mayor of Minneapolis, or St. Paul, I'm George Latimer, who was the arbitrator in our particular case with this issue. So just for clarification, I wanted to mention that.
I understand the reason for this partial implementation is because of the appeal that's going on.
The insurance is another issue that, right now, we are appealing the decision by the arbitrator, and that issue will be coming back to us after our labor attorney and city administrator get back in touch with us as to the outcome.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? We do rope call?
Yes, it's a resolution.
Yes, it's a resolution.
Rope call.
Councilmember DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Is there, Councilman Amon, did you have something else?
I have one other thing, Mr. Mayor. Given thought to the discussions we had with the Charter Commission, we have an issue before, it's that we have to deal with, and that's the issue of how we conduct our meetings and what rules of orders we're going to be doing, and knowing the election is coming up tomorrow, and we're going to be having maybe new people, maybe not, I don't know, I can't predict that. But either way, as a group, we have to come up with the rule of orders, rules of order, and adopt them. And I'm just wondering if maybe we could bring this up at Labor Relations Committee and discuss the options and review the different types of rules of order we have, or if not, we could have a full meeting with the city council immediately after the elections and discuss which plan or which type of rules of orders we'd like to implement, so we get a consensus for everybody. That was why we lobbied or we discussed with the Charter Commission, was that we felt, I felt personally, that it'd be much better for the city council people and the mayor to decide what types of orders, the rules of order we'd have, rather than them being dictated by the charter. So I'm hoping that somehow we can, we'll have to work on that, and if there's any revisions or changes in how we conduct the business here, we're going to have to make appropriate steps. So I'm not sure what the council and the mayor wants to do, I just thought of bringing it up for discussion, we can go any way we want with it.
I assume that would be up to the council, am I right?
It is. I mean, if the council wishes to have staff prepare either for a committee or the full council, you know, some summaries of some options, such as Robert's Rules or the Mayor's, Minnesota Mayor's Association, we can certainly do that, but it's up to the council whether you want to do it as a committee or a council of the whole.
I'd like to get working on it right away, and I thought I'd bring it to Labor Relations so that we can get the information out as much as we can at that time, and then get input from the people on the Labor Relations, and then, of course, have, definitely have, we have to have a meeting, and we have to adopt those rules at the first meeting prior to our first regular monthly meeting at the first year, so, you know, this is coming up, it's coming up pretty quick.
We can certainly do that. We can try to have information for this Thursday, that may be a little soon, but we have another Labor Relations on November 20th, and we certainly can have information by that time.
That'll be fine.
Mr. Mayor, I have one comment about the charter amendments. Following the council's vote on the charter amendments, the charter amendments don't take effect for 90 days.
Oh.
So those are not going to be in effect January 1, 2013.
We got some more time to play with it, then.
That's right.
But it is good, I mean, we certainly can get started and begin to put the information together for the council, so that it's not last minute.
Thank you.
Councilman Christensen, did you have a comment?
Yes, on that same item that Steve is mentioning, one of our options is to write our own book of rules that we're going to live by. We don't have to adopt any other set rules. The Mayor's Association's rules that were given to us were basically for statutory cities, and there's a lot of stuff in it that isn't even conformed to what we do. So I would approach it from that aspect, you know, that we can look at all these Robert's Rules and whatever books there are, and select the ones that we want to put in our own. I mean, it can be pretty basic, it doesn't have to be 100 pages long. That would be my suggestion.
There's a lot of rules. Councilman DeBleek?
I thought by the Charter Commission, they gave us a list of documents.
Right.
Various rules that we could adopt, not, and I don't believe, Martin Aron was one of those. But anyway, I would like to remind or have the staff or Councilman Amon, when they look at this, I know whichever rules that the... at this, I know whichever rules that the council adopts is also the same rules that all the boards and commissions are to be using. So, I should have input from some of those boards and commissions that will also be affected by it.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I agree, and I would think Robert's Rules of Order, just my personal thought is Robert's Rules of Order, which is a quasi of what we're doing here, would be probably the easiest to adjust to and probably the most familiar with people that are on board in commissions. But we should maybe get input from those groups and commissions too. If not, we may have to have a short training session on rules of order for all the people on the boards and commissions if they're not up to date on the rules. But it's down the road, I just thought of bringing it up, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for the city attorney.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible to pick and choose from certain rules of order and make your own rules of order?
Well, the city administrator was just pointing out to me what the charter amendment says, and it does seem to restrict what you may be able to do there, because it says that, or the proposed is, the council shall adopt at the meeting prescribed a set of parliamentary rules, and then it says, for instance, Robert's Rules of Order, Mason's, Mayor's Association rules. It doesn't say you can adopt your own rules, but it's a little unclear, actually, now that we're talking in reality what you're planning on doing, and it says a set of parliamentary rules, i.e., and then less, for instance. So, I'm not quite sure how to interpret, for instance, if that's, it seems to certainly indicate that you should adopt rules of order. There may be some flexibility for adopting your own set of rules. It's not entirely clear from how that's worded.
Thank you.
As the charter states presently, it says that we will make our own set of rules, if I'm not mistaken.
It does say that in the terms.
We can. Now, if the new one is not saying that, then I won't have my vote. We were understanding that we were gonna set up a set of rules, and that we could set our own rules of civility or whatever we wanted to use, and that was my understanding of the charter and the Charter Committee. When it says, for instance, da-da-da-da-da, that doesn't mean we have to choose one of those, at least in my own thinking, I don't think that.
And, you know, Councilor Christensen, I mean, you may be right on that, I'm just, I'm trying to read this as we're talking about it again. You know, it says, the council shall adopt at the meeting prescribed in subdivision one, an authorized set of parliamentary rules, for instance, Robert's Rules of Order, Mason's manual, or Minnesota Mayor's. You know, again, I don't know what the intent of the Charter Commission was related to that.
Does it say et cetera?
No.
It just says those three and that's it.
And it does delete the wording, adopt its own rules and order.
Maybe we should get confirmed what their intent was. Well, I think it's clear that their intent is an authorized set of parliamentary rules, not authorized by the council. Now, and we can get interpretation here, if you really wanted to fight this harder, this charter won't be in effect in subdivision one, which is the first Monday after the first Tuesday after a general election. So, that to me sounds like a stalling tactic for two years, if you wanted to play hardball, but eventually, in two years, it would have to be an authorized set of parliamentary rules. We should probably find out from them their intent. I mean, here we go, somebody's interpretation of what's stated. We have so many rules and regulations in this country, and everybody interprets them a little bit differently, and I would like to maybe, if I can get ahold of Mr. Muske and find out what the intent of the Charter Commission was.
We can do that, and we can begin to prepare the information on the options that are listed as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on that subject, I remember the meetings that we had, and a lot of us were in attendance with the Charter Commission on this particular issue, and some of the same thoughts were brought up front. We did feel that definitely rules of order would help run the meeting quicker, more efficiently, and as for organizational purposes too. So, there's a lot of benefits to adopting a specific set of rules. And I believe what they were trying to give us only a definite, two or three, I think there were more than the list that's in the proposed changes right now previously. But we did wanna have them give us the discretion of adopting them, rather than the Charter Commission stating that these are the ones we have to adopt. So, I'm a little confused too, but my understanding was it would give, we would agree to a form of rules, a professional set of rules that people were familiar with, either by going through college classes or high school classes on how to conduct business and meetings, rather than, rather than just a set of rules, a short, a short set of rules, Mr. Christensen. I know where you're coming from, but either way, if this is what, after, because this took a lot of time by the Charter Commission, it was kind of a controversial issue, but I think they were finally receptive to the idea that we would make the decision that would give us some leeway, and for that, I thought that was kind of a way of negotiating or reaching a consensus that we'd both be happy with what was gonna be in the charter. But I don't have any problem with it, whatever one the council would like to adopt. And that's why I think it's really important that we do our homework on this, because some people might have a feel more comfortable with one or the other, and majority would rule on the council, but then we'd all have to learn the same set of rules. So, I'm just trying to get the controversy, or the controversy over, which I think in the ordinance it is, it's not a controversial now, we've kind of defined that we do need a set of rules, and these are the ones we're gonna have to deal with. But I have no problem with Ron's question, I just don't want this to linger on, because we only have 30 days to pass this.
I understand.
Thank you.
But I do tend to agree with Mr. Christensen that better that we find out now and give clarification now than later.
Absolutely.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do recall that our previous city attorney was very adamant in his statement that do not adopt Robert's Rules of Orders. If you all recall that, he was at a League of Minnesota Cities, League of Minnesota Cities-sponsored City Attorney's Association, and they came back and they said, it's just too thick, too big, and it's very complicated. That's why we see these other ones like the Mayor's Association, their set of rules, they kind of thinned it down, and it's into like six pages. Where Robert's Rules of Orders is a thick book, and it just doesn't, a lot doesn't pertain to what we do in a meeting. But I do recall that, and he did, he stated that, and so I would be against Robert's Rules of Orders.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Docken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your Minnesota Mayor's Handbook, January 2010, starting on page 22, it talks about, in chapter three, meeting management. On page 23, it talks about basically what Councilmember Christensen just said, item number two, bylaws, policies on meeting management. A statutory city council has the power to regulate its own procedures. Home rule charter cities may have similar provisions to their charters. Councils often regulate their procedures through the formal adoption of bylaws. Be good to have pages 22, 23, and 24 as part of our packet to look at. Thank you.
I'll move to adjourn. I'm not ready yet. I would, I have a comment to make on, given the happenings, shall I say, of the last week or two, which I won't go into detail on, this may sound a little strange to me, but tomorrow's election has much to do with different approaches to fiscal management and government service delivery. Likewise, in Wilmer, at a different level, we have been saying we need to face innovation and consideration of new ways of doing business. I'd like to put forth the idea to our council, who seemingly is ready for change, to energize the process by considering a resolution to state that in recognition of the need for prudent preparation for the future, we hereby state a goal and create a process to reach out to surrounding municipal bodies and levels of government to indicate our willingness to meet beneficial interest. And furthermore, this council creates a committee to pursue this purpose comprised of the mayor, the city administrator, and the chair or his designee of the labor committee. I'm advocating this effort begin now, because while some may describe differences in viewpoint among council members, I see all members valuing the same goals with however different paths to reach them. This resolution stating a policy and establishing a process for consideration of collaboration is what can advance Wilmer from a talking phase of theory to the tangible avenue of planning, approvals, and implementation. Did you all understand that? I would like for this body to at least consider making a resolution to have a committee and to follow up on what, how we can work together with other municipal utilities, that including, I think I said municipal utilities, I didn't.
Municipalities.
Municipalities.
Mr. Mayor, I strongly agree with you, and thank you for running with that idea. I think it's just fantastic. We don't communicate with our fellow citizens in the outlying areas, and I think it's great that you've brought it to this point in the form of resolutions, it makes it, it makes it formal. I don't know how the Labor Relations Committee Chair got in there, but.
Or his designee.
Or his, okay, I like that idea even better. But I think this, as we see the changes coming up with government and the challenges that await us, and the growth of our community, we have to collaborate more with the other communities, and I sure hope that they feel the same way. And it's not for a me, me type of situation, or Wilmer versus Spicer, or Raymond, or whatever city. It's about what we can do, and I strongly encourage that, I thank you for bringing that forward, and I would introduce the resolution, if you would like that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move.
I'll second it for discussion.
Should we bring it to one of the committees?
Yes. That would be my opinion, my suggestion. We just heard it tonight, it's a lot to think about, maybe throw a copy of that in each of our boxes so we can.
Can we do that?
If you provide me a copy, I can put that out with the next pack, if you have a copy available, or can drop one off.
I will.
Certainly do that.
I'll withdraw.
I'll withdraw my second, and what committee, I mean, would that be Labor?
It can go Labor, it could go to Finance, I mean.
Or Community Development.
I think it probably, I mean, you suggested Labor, the Labor Chair, that's maybe the best place to discuss it then.
It's a good idea, but we need to chew on it.
Councilman Anderson, did you have a question?
I did, I did. I didn't, I don't know if I heard everything, but I'm, what I heard was we're talking about municipalities.
Municipalities, yes.
What about larger entities? What about county? What about other organizations? Or are we limiting this?
We're not limiting it to municipalities, so to speak, in my opinion, would be, the county would be eligible, certainly.
Okay. All right, but I think it's a very good idea to send it to committee to kind of ferret this out a little bit.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
I would just suggest that these seven pages that I've mentioned numerous times over the last six months, it's called Focusing on Outcomes, Redesigning Minnesota's Local Government Services, and it has the logo of the League of Minnesota Cities, Association of Minnesota Counties, and the Independent School Districts. It's already been done, people have been implementing it since 2010. We're just slow to getting started, but it's a great idea, Steve, and this should be one of the documents that we focus on. We don't have to rediscover anything, it's already been discovered.
So, the motion is to?
I withdraw my motion, Mr. Mayor.
There is no motion?
Yeah.
It's just gonna be referred to the committee.
Send it to the committee.
The Labor Committee?
That seems to be the consensus, yes, we'll start there.
Thank you. Okay, now I will enter, motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn, we are adjourned.